...in large do an outstanding job of providing safe and orderly environments for students. And I'm always amazed to see in classrooms, students from different gangs sitting together, interacting, and then to read that they're out on the streets looking to harm others. There's a culture in schools that has a lot to do with interacting in a cooperative way, and I credit our schools with making maximum use of that. Not that there aren't more things we could be doing, but we're going to be talking about some of those. Because student safety is an ongoing issue. We plan, do contingency planning around safety issues. Lockdown at San Marcos is a good example. In fact, we'd like to comment on that. And along the way, we'd like to comment particularly on a number of things where we have a collaborative process and a collaborative relationship. One is having a school resource officer available here full-time at Dos Pueblos High School. And that's thanks, in part, to the city of Galita and your funding, and in part to the county sheriff's office and their funding. We would not have a full-time person if we didn't have that financial support. That helps us tremendously. Another thing that we'd like to highlight is the after-school activities, particularly at Galita Valley Junior High. You'll see in the handouts, and we'll make comment on this, that these after-school activities to get kids prosocially occupied in after-school, primarily in after-school sports, are again jointly funded by the school district, by the city of Santa Barbara, and by some other sources. And finally, we'd like to highlight the student activities made available through the Dos Pueblos Aquatic Center. I think we gave credit to the community before. It was so gratifying to see, in the community contributions, 500 names of people who contributed on a private basis to the construction of this aquatic center. A center that is used, of course, by the school, but is also used by the community, and we want to see it used all the time. You know, it's, that pool is pretty full from early in the morning until after dark sometimes. So, to present this report is our own Director of Student Services and Compliance. This is Michael Gonzalez.
President Parker, Mayor Sevies, Board members, council members, thank you very much. Let me share, before I begin to summarize this report, something about that first chart that showed the concentric circles, just to make sure that we clearly understand that that center, that very target population, are youngsters in our community that have, that are on probation with gangs' terms and conditions. And as the superintendent explained, it goes out from there. But that center target are those students who very much are known gang members and are under the supervision currently of the probation department. I also want to make a, reinforce a statement that was made by the superintendent, to first of all, thank very much the county sheriff's department for their assistance in keeping our schools safe, but also to be very public and thank the city council of Galita for making funds available. The presence of school resource officers at San Marcos High School, at Dos Pueblos High School, at Galita Valley, Galita Valley Junior High, has been instrumental in making sure that our schools continue to be safe. And when I get to San Marcos, we'll summarize their very recent importance to this project. As the superintendent spoke, we have, we are obligated by state law, I think we're obligated simply out of morality, to make sure that our schools are well-equipped on a daily basis to ensure the safety of our students. And so, the report I shared with you outlines the kinds of plans that were required by our governing board and by the California Education Code to implement. So, I'm not really going to emphasize those. What I would like to share with you is that one of the things that's very well-known is especially among high-risk youth, at-risk youth, that those hours after school that are not spent supervised, between the hours that school lets out and parents get home, are very often very high-risk times for these youngsters. One of the things that you folks, all of you sitting before me, have done is supported a very active after-school program. If you, if, on page three of that handout, you'll see, and I'd like to just take a bit of time, we have an after-school program that includes all of the Santa Barbara school district's junior highs, as well as carpentry. But what I want to point out is that the funding for this program, it is currently administered through the Police Activities League of the city of Santa Barbara. But I want to point out that a community development block grant from the city of Galita, to the tune of $8,381, supports that program. From the general fund of the city of Galita, $15,000 goes to support that program. From the city of Santa Barbara General Fund, another $20,000 comes from, and is, and as is appropriate, the school district kicks in an additional $40,000 to make sure that youngsters who want to be involved in after-school activities and are encouraged to be involved in after-school activities have an opportunity to do so at no cost to them. What's required is an interest. I also want to share with you that the attachment outlines that there are certain requirements that we have for student participation. One of them is that you're doing your work at school. And that's vital. It's vital that if you're going to get involved with after-school activities, that you be encouraged to do the right thing during the school day. And we have a lot of success with that. I also mentioned that more recently, we've begun an after-school cross-country teams. And you well know, in the city of Santa Barbara, in this greater environment, in the city of Galita, we have a great running community. And we have found a mechanism that permits youngsters to get involved with very experienced coaches. And I outlined some of the activities, some of the year-end activities that take place. In the write-up, I shared with you the large community effort that went to support that beautiful Ellings Aquatic Center that you folks got to tour earlier today. And just for the public record, I'd like to share some of the numbers involved in that whole endeavor. Out of the Measure V bond that was passed through the district and through the support of citizens, we have spent at least $1.3 million of Measure V bonds to set that facility up. State matching funds to the tune of $2.6 million. An additional $2 million came from the South Coast Community Aquatic Center, which is actually centered here in Galita. Mr. Ellings, who we've chose to name the facility after, contributed $1 million. Ms. Wells, another $500,000. And the Santa Barbara Educational Foundation also contributed $110,000. The creation was this beautiful facility that you had an opportunity to review. That facility not only permits a stay-of-the-art athletic program to operate in that pool, water polo, swimming, but it also permits young people, tiny tots, novice learners, adults, to enjoy those facilities during the summer. And I've outlined some of the costs involved, some of the fees that are charged for folks who want to use that pool area. I've had the privilege of having my own children learn how to swim through that pool many, many years ago. And so, I know that today, that pool does even a better job than it did before. I wanted to share with you very quickly that, as you all know, on October 1st, we had, we were forced to lock down San Marcos High School. And as you all know, eventually, bottom line is that we did not find a gun, a pistol, on that campus. What may not be well-known is, at the time, an adult reported allegedly the presence of a gun, we had access, immediate access, to a school resource officer from the county sheriff's department. He, after being the school assistant principal who received this report, consulted with the school resource officer, and immediately, a lockdown was put into place. And I think all of us know that we had helicopters, that Hollister School was closed down. We began the lockdown about 9:30, and really, the entire drill, exercise, protective steps that we took didn't really end until very late in the evening. But the point is that all of our children at that school remained safe the entire time. That might have been different had we not had the support of a school resource officer immediately on campus. So, I want to thank you very much for continuing to support that. I think that I'll simply end this report and entertain your questions by saying that these issues that I've spoken to are very clear evidence that indeed, we do have a partnership, a very important partnership, one that continues to work very well. I've also attached to this Attachment 11, a copy of our, what's called Civic Center Use Permit. And I won't answer those questions because we have the expert in the house that can do that, our own Director of Facilities. But anyway, if there's any questions or comments that you would like to pose about this report, we're certainly prepared to answer them.
Thank you. Mayor Sevies?
Mr. Gonzalez, I have one question. At Galita Valley Junior High, it talks about maintaining the Green Point average and encouraging the turn in their homework. But do you have, or does the program also offer a study hall-type program to help them with their homework while they're at the, at the school?
Yes, it does. We have a very comprehensive after-school program that assists youngsters with homework assignments.
Is that part of the PAL program? Is that separate from?
It is a separate program from the PAL program. But I will also share with you that the PAL officers, who are very, very much pro-youth, have this incredible skill of guiding youngsters to make sure that work gets completed.
Thank you.
Mrs. Connell, did you want to ask anything at this point, or?
Well, you know, I'm interested in looking at the fee schedule. I know how much this facility in particular, the playing fields are used. And I'm never quite sure whether they're being used simply by people walking on and using them, or whether they are paying these fees. But I'm just wondering, I mean, obviously, having all this open space and playing fields is an incredible community resource. And, you know, I am a neighbor of the school. I live right below the football field post. And one of the things that I value is being able to walk down past the baseball fields and along by the creek, where basically, we have an oak woodland now. It used to be a lemon grove, and now you have an oak tree wherever there used to be a lemon. But, you know, I guess what I'm, I'm not sure if this is a question so much as a recognition of the value of school facilities. Now, I'm not sure that Galita Valley is open in the same way that Dos Pueblos is. Maybe you might know that.
It is. In fact, Dave Hetgen may want to speak to this. But the primary point is that school facilities are available to the community. They're available to the community really based on a fee schedule that is, that is based on whether it serves the school, whether it serves students at the school, whether it's an outside organization that comes in and pays for the use of those facilities. In many cases, it only covers the cost of general maintenance and overseeing those facilities. In fact, we were thinking of setting up a fee booth down by your house. But we're happy to let people walk their dogs here on our campus. Dave?
Dr. Sevies, members of the board, members of the council, the Civic Center Act is the act that governs the use of school activities by people other than the school district. And this fee schedule and the board policy and administrative regulation, 1330, is what we're required to have in place in order to allow community use. And this is primarily organized community use. Most of our schools are open, where you could walk through in the evening time, like you mentioned, down the backside of Dos Pueblos towards the grove, there's a nice, nice pathway built in there. I know that there's a lot of the houses and the people in that community walk this area. And I know a lot of them may come and walk on the track and run on the track. And this fee schedule doesn't really apply to somebody that wants to come on the campus and run on, or jog on the track for 20 minutes. This is designed for organized activities, where you reserve the facility, you pay for the facility, and it's mainly, like, if we have some private athletic clubs that use Dos Pueblos for track meets, track practice, those types of organized activities is what the Civic Center Act is designed to cover, not the casual, "I'm going to go to Dos Pueblos or San Marcos High School and jog on the track for 20 minutes while no one's there and there's no organized activities."
In Galita Valley Junior High, is it any different?
Galita Valley Junior High doesn't have a jogging track, but you could, I mean, you could access that campus and on a Sunday afternoon, and your family can play a game of frisbee on the lawn. And that's a little bit different than an organized softball game.
I just have, I may be wrong. I have the impression that they do close the gates at Galita Valley, so it's not totally accessible. Am I wrong?
They may. We leave, we leave, at most of our elementary schools and junior highs, we leave to discretion of the principal when the campus is closed up in the evening and when access ceases to exist. But if there's an organized activity, and there's, and they're paying for that activity, then the campus would be open for that activity. And those people would typically pay the custodial overtime or staff overtime necessary to open and close that facility and clean up afterwards. But the hours that, like, at La Colina, they have the gates out front, and the same at Galita Valley, and a lot of our elementaries within the city boundaries, it's pretty much to discretion of the principal when that facility is closed, at what type of date, based on their knowledge of their neighborhood, their community, their activities, and what level of damage and vandalism they may incur historically by not closing at a certain time.
Maybe it's also because you brought up the issue of vandalism, and I know there's a fair amount of graffiti, particularly on the campus. And I'm wondering, you know, there's a wonderful gentleman, who I won't name here, but who, you can call him, and he'll clean up graffiti all over the city, but I'm not sure if the school district has its own program for graffiti.
The way we operate with graffiti, typically, the school custodians are the first ones on campus in the morning. And any graffiti they find, they do have a certain supply of paint and cleaning materials that they can take care of that. If it's something they can't take care of, something on a large scale, there's a number they can call in to our maintenance department. And when our maintenance department shows up first thing in the morning, the first thing they do is check to see if there's any graffiti that they need to go address. That's the painter's number-one thing to do in the morning. Does any site have graffiti that they can't have themselves? Because our goal is to have it covered up before students arrive at school.
Thank you. Thank you. And I have to say that that has been quite successful. So, I appreciate that, especially when I see it lingering in my own city neighborhood for quite a long time. I appreciate how quick our maintenance department is on that. Any other comments, questions on this?
Just one question.
Yes, Mayor Sevies?
Joint use agreements. Were you going to speak on that, or do you have other staff members to speak on? I'm curious as to...
Actually, we had considered a joint use agreement. We have a joint use agreement with the city of Santa Barbara. And it's to share facilities because we have certain common interests, and we allow the city of Santa Barbara, for example, to share our fields for their events. And we turn them over to city employees. In fact, they even provide a park ranger, get the crickets out of here. They provide a park ranger to go around to our campuses, as well as their own parks, to just patrol these areas. And that may be something that may be very useful to us in the future. So, we have had initial conversations about it. And we're particularly interested in discussion about the use of the aquatics facility and getting a swim program going here, so that the kids, all the kids of Galita can participate in that. We do have a, with the elementary district, we have a third-grade swim program where every student learns to swim. That's something we're doing in our own elementary district as well. And Ms. Deacon, you may want to speak to that as well, because I know you have an interest in it.
Mrs. Deacon?
I do. Well, first, I just wanted to say, I'm really struck by how these two themes of youth-at-risk are woven into this notion of finding extracurricular activities where they may find, the students may find a passion that'll anchor them to the school that in turn may improve their academic achievement. I think we've seen that a lot. Mayor Sevies and I were talking earlier about how during tough financial times, organizations like our own can work together and build partnerships and find more efficient ways to do things, and maybe creatively find new ways of doing things. I know the city of Galita, and I want to thank Mr. Singer for this, helped provide some of the insurance underwriting for the third-grade swim program when it was held here at Dos Pueblos last year for the students of the Galita Union School District. And I know it's at UCSB this coming year because of some scheduling problems here at DP, but we're hoping it will come back to Dos Pueblos. One of the things that I'd be interested in is finding ways that we can work with your budding recreation department to utilize the resources that we have in our schools and forge some of these joint use agreements like we have with the city of Santa Barbara. I think there's so many good things that are already happening, and I'm really happy to see, if you've read this letter about the swim programs that are going to be offered this summer, where they're talking about aquatic fitness for seniors, master swim for adults. Those are things that haven't been offered here before. And when the fundraisers for the pool project went out to the community, opportunities such as these were those among the many things that were envisioned. I was a Dos Pueblos parent for seven years, and for six of those years, I helped fundraise for the swimming pool. So, this is something near and dear to my heart. But I do think that there are many more opportunities to forge these kinds of great relationships like the ones we have with PAL and the city. So, whatever we can do to put our heads together and find more of these good things is something I certainly am encouraged by. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have public comment on this item. Ms. Smith?
Madam President, if I may just mention that in the past, we have furnished a copy of the joint use agreement we have with the city of Santa Barbara to certain members of the city of Galita. I'm not sure how long ago that happened, or who has it. But if you'd like another copy to look at, to gather ideas, we'd be glad to furnish that.
Would you give a copy to Mr. Singer, please?
We already have it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education, members of the Galita City Council. I didn't hear anything about youth activities. Did you? I'm asking you. Did you hear anything about youth activities just now in the presentation?
Mrs. Smith, we're not going to have an interaction. You may make your comment.
I'm sorry, but this is board, public comments. You're allowed to ask questions so I can get a clarification. I am allowed to ask questions. Well, okay. I didn't hear anything about youth activities. Can you name one activity or nonprofit organization that provides activities for children, our students? Did you see one on the list? Did you see surfing and biking, skateboarding and hip-hop? I ran for the school board, and at a school board meeting, I asked that PE include hip-hop, tai-chi, martial arts, dance, things that would engage children, things that children can do with their bodies. And Gina Perry said, from the Daily Sound, that it was the most disturbing moment of the board meeting. On November 1st, this year, I emceed the Lau Kundo Temple of Martial Arts demonstration, and eight Santa Barbara students, four UC students, one professor, and four public school teachers performed. Dos Pueblos students, Amado and Juan Hernandez, Sam Skop, Matuz Dulnick, John Greening, and Silvio Hubner, presented. And they have practiced martial arts. They are skilled with lethal weapons. And I am asking that they be allowed to present at a school... I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask for a little more time.
No, Mrs. Smith.
Okay. I'm asking that they be allowed to present at a school, I can't remember what the name of it is, when you all come together. An assembly, thank you. The Gang Task Force is a Lie, and Michael Gonzalez was supposed to talk about joint efforts for youth activities, and he was off-topic. And, so am I, but you don't want to hear what I have to say. Michael Gonzalez called that slide concentric circles.
Thirty seconds.
But it's also, it's also called a target. The Gang Task Force has called their work vector control. They are going to get with laser-sharp focus, they're going to get our children, did you see it? Oh, it was 160 gang members, 750 at-risk gang members, but you know what? There were 16,792 students. Do you think they're kind of rounding things out? Because I want you to know that people, children, are being forced to register as gang task, as gang members...
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
...to get out of jail. You may ask me questions. You may tell her to let me have more time, because there's a lot more information on the thick mat.
Mrs. Smith?
I want you to be, I want you to...
Mrs. Smith, you're out of order now. Thank you very much.
You may ask me questions if you...
We need to move on to item 12, which is additional matters for placement on a future agenda. We clearly have one percolating already with the joint use agreements. Any other ideas or things that council members have been thinking of? Mrs. Connell?
There's one issue that we haven't talked about, and it might be interesting to discuss, and that is housing. I know that at one point, and I don't know if it's still current or not, the school district was looking at the possibility of building housing. But regardless of that, I think we know that on the south coast of Santa Barbara County, housing is a problem for a lot of employees, and I suspect it probably is for the school district too. So, it might be useful to have a discussion of what the city has going as far as housing and what the school district perceives as their needs. And this, I mean, this affects your students as well as your staff. And the fact that you are thinking of cutting off into district transfers, which will affect presumably some of the people now commuting into this area.
Well, we actually have done that. So, yes, it will, it will make...
So, I think that could be a topic to explore.
Yeah. Any others?
I just have one. And first of all, I want to, again, recognize as the council, that the efforts you're doing on campus with your green committees. And, you know, we, although we're only seven years old, we already have an employee green committee. We also just recently put together two council members to serve on a green issues committee. So, I think there's a lot of things that we can do together. I would love to have, maybe have Dr. Sevies, Mr. Singer... I would love to have, maybe have Dr. Sarves, Mr. Singer, look at the possibility of forming a joint committee, where we can work together on green issues since we can all benefit from it. And it'd be wonderful to have that on our next agenda in a year's time.
Great. All right. Well, at this point, I'm going to say thank you again to Mark Swanet, Principal of Dos Pueblos, to your staff here for everything that you've done to make this such a, an inviting venue, and to our district staff, to the Galita Council, and the staff of the city of Galita. We know that it's hard to go outside of the box in terms of holding meetings in unusual places, in terms of getting all the tech set up and everything arranged. So, we highly appreciate everything you've done to make this happen. Dr. Sarves?
May I also announce that this meeting will air on Channel 19 on Saturday, November 21st, at 10:00 a.m. and at 5:00 p.m.
All right. Thank you. And with no objection from council members or school board members, we will adjourn this meeting.